The similarities.
Yes.
Five asterisks.
I'd like to, are you ready?
Yes.
I'd like to convene the June 29 meeting of the Vosme County Commissioners. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join in the moment of recital, especially for Sergeant Gallagher from Muffelma who's been taken. It's a terrible, terrible thing when we see close to home the effect of what engagement foreign wars has. So please. Thank you very much. On public comment, I'd like to start off with a suggestion that if we have heard from you before on matters that we have not, you know, that we have, if you have new information in public comment, it would be useful for you to offer that at this time. So you'll be allowed three minutes. And is there any public comment? Please identify yourself.
My name is Cathy Sherman, and in some ways you have heard from me before, but this is a request that you do put on the agenda following the next meeting after we present to the Assembly some ideas for what kinds of responsibilities and what kinds of issues need to come up about wind energy or other solar too, in terms of seeking independence between the boards, in terms of looking back at CEVEX Charter, in terms of, and I will write to you, but anyhow, in terms of whether the Charter and the activities when it was Cape Cod Light, the county and Barnstable, the town of Barnstable only that were members and made up the Charter, made up the membership rules, how to have some independence in terms of review of municipal projects, or if you want to call them government projects. Certainly, I mean, we understand that there is an imperative in terms of finances, and then separately, this was something that the gentleman from Hall brought out last night. There's sort of the financial side of it, there's our environmental energy side of it, and those aren't necessarily the two important things. But we had an opportunity last night to hear from several projects that were community-driven and/or the distributed use that we had prior to some legislation that really has caused, I'd say, an earthquake in terms of goals. I don't want this to be finger pointing, we are all responsible for this, at the town level, individual levels, in county, and I think the county can do some things. As I've tried to identify before, my chief complaint with the cooperative and maybe CLC 2 is only that, in terms of protesting against regulations that were already very compromised in terms of having a stacked deck, in terms of out of public meaning conferences or moves that either solicited input to the Rural Utility Service or sought to amend legislation.
Excuse me, I'm not really borrowing you on this. Could you give me some clarification exactly what you're asking?
I'm asking you to put on the agenda for your next meeting, points that can be considered by you Commissioners as well as the Assembly. There is different roles in terms of ways that we can improve these semi-public or public energy-related services so that they are serving the entire public, not just towns, they're serving ratepayers, and yes, I do think that we probably do have some questions and right to know where the surcharges on our utility bills go. Okay? We're all paying them. I know that what we pay towards Cape Cod Light is mire compared to what we pay towards the state, and that's one reason why I say I think there's plenty of responsibility to go around. We need to not be finger pointing, but try to come up with some solutions to the things that the public has been requesting you address for the last couple of months.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment?
I have one thing. During the last, during the last meeting was discussed, pretty good detail, how important it was for the county Commissioners to enjoy the support of county administrative staff. And once again, I don't see the county administrator, his assistant, or anybody from their office, and I thought it was pretty important that you received that kind of support.
I'll respond to that. Mark is called in sick, he's in bed. Maggie is with two consultants and staff developing information for Department of Public Utilities hearing, which is time-dependent. I can't, I don't believe we can predict when people are ill or not, and that's the reason today. Now, at this point, since we're finished with public, you know, with the public comment part of the meeting, I would suggest to my Commissioners, if you wish to postpone this meeting till Friday, this would be the opportunity if you can do that.
All I know is that I've stated in the past that I think that we should not have these meetings without county administration present. And I thought we agreed that we would not have hearings if the county administration was not present.
What we could do, since Dan is already here, to make a presentation, we could hear his presentation, postpone everything else, and reconvene at a time convenient on Friday.
That is fine.
If that, if that's what you wish. I would like to see Dan go back and redo his schedule, that's a real imposition.
I agree.
In order for us to be in compliance, we would have to meet after, in the afternoon on Friday.
That's right, because it's now one o'clock, so.
Well, is there any other?
We need a 48-hour note, so.
It's a very small agenda, and the summary of items are just basically administration, no policy things.
Well, so, yeah, we should look at the agenda, if all we have is open cave and signing the summary of actions.
I agree. I mean, on this particular case, it's not, although there's.
Okay, so do you want, did you wish to continue? Okay, so with that.
Yeah, let's continue.
All right, we won't continue for today, but I, in the future, I think that we have to make sure that.
In this sense, you're absolutely right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Doherty.
Dan?
Well, thank you for having me back once again. It's obviously very important to open cave, to keep the county Commissioners and the viewing audience obviously informed of our status of our work and what's going on, with a slant towards the county's concerns with relation to the project itself. So I'm going to cover a few things. One is the construction of the network. We're going through a process now of getting licenses to telephone poles and conduits around the region from the utilities, M-Star, National Grid, and Verizon, that will allow us to place the fiber optics. The first order of fiber optic cable has actually been placed for 35 miles of fiber. I think this may be a good sign for the economy, I don't hate to predict this, but that there's actually a backlog of manufacturers' ability to build fiber, manufacture fiber. That's in part because of Japan's earthquake and tsunami, that they need to rebuild a lot of their infrastructure, and the manufacturing companies that would normally be used to purchase fiber optics from have been hurt by this tsunami as well. So that's good for American companies, I guess, because there's a big backlog of orders. But the network development continues on, we're negotiating with Army Corps of Engineers and others to make sure that we've checked all the boxes, got all the permits, and we're doing that process. So we expect to start putting fiber up on poles, probably in the August timeframe, with the first segments available probably next summer, and we still see ourselves completing on time in January of 2013 with the construction of the network. With regard to the Regional Colocation Center, this is the building that the county has contributed a lease to, the former public safety building here on the county complex. We are very close to signing a contract with stateside construction to renovate the building generally. It's a two-part process here. One is to just generally renovate the building. It needs to be gutted and redone. The second part is to build a data center in the basement of that building. So with regard to the first component, the renovation, again, we're just about to sign a contract with stateside construction, and we will begin the design process and the renovation. And that is expected to take about six months or so. So the Cape Cod Commission's been very generous in giving us space down in their building for office space, we'll eventually be moving out of there in the next five or six months up to that building. As you recall, the building has three floors, the ground floor, a first floor, and a second floor. So the first floor and the second floor will be completed as part of this process, this general renovation. The first floor will have on it Open Cave offices, the company that operates the network and the data center will have operations space in that, in that first floor, and there'll be a conference room area that we're going to do, that'll be a shared space among all the tenants, the county can use it, we can use it, that kind of thing. So as everybody who works here on the campus knows, there's a shortage of conference room space. And the second floor is for the county's use. We will prepare it to a general office state, but the county probably needs to have the internal discussions of what occupancy will be up there. Now, it's always been viewed as what I call the regional umbrella services operations center, so if we're going to have operating on our network, things like common applications like GIS, that's a good place to house those kinds of things, those kinds of operations. But that's completely up to the county, we'll renovate the space though. Yes?
Is that space big enough to, say, move a department such as the Cape Cod Commission, which is paying rent, to that building? Is it big enough for that?
It's not. It's because of the eaves, it's on the second floor, the eaves, you don't get the full effect of the building footprint. It's a, you know, maybe 1,400 square feet is going to be usable up there.
But some of their GIS staff could probably.
They could potentially do that if they so chose, but that's completely up to you.
But that's up to, okay, those are things to consider.
But we will build in the infrastructure, electrical and network connectivity and all that kind of stuff as part of that. Other things that'll be an advantage for us is that the county, for example, needs to improve the water main and sewage piping here, so we know that, but there's also a need in our project to upgrade the power, there's a need for us to put conduit in the ground on the property for the network fiber to go through. So there's no sense in all of us paying to open the ground for that purpose. We're going to try to coordinate as best we can among all of us to do it together so that all of the costs are reduced. Yes?
On the water mains and the sewage connections, the issue before when we were looking at this was the, we had to add some sort of mechanical boost, you know, some pumps.
Yeah.
Is there any chance that even this can revert to gravity flow and get?
I don't know, honestly, that'd be an engineering question. I just know that, in general, there's a need for this on the complex, obviously, but we would have to have, there's no sprinkler system in that building now, you have to have it, it's code requirement, while the supply pipe has to be increased in order to accommodate that, that kind of, to jail the same things.
Mr. Sherman, I believe there is money in the budget, in the budget this year to do that as well.
Yes, I know there's planning underway for it, but again, we can all potentially save some money by opening the road once and putting our conduit, the power conduit, and the sewer in there all at once.
And if I may, you're having those discussions now with county administration, and so it's all coordinated together and nobody's, okay, good.
Yep. I mean, in a big way, where, for example, as we go through the design process, we're asking the county to sit down at the desk with us to say what are your needs. A big contribution will be the Cape Cod Light Compact folks. In fact, they've accompanied me on some meetings to, in Rhode Island, to what are very green, energy-efficient data centers that are out there now. We want to employ as much of that kind of technology as we can, and we're frankly relying on the Light Compact folks to help us in making those determinations. So we fully are engaged with those folks to make sure that we're doing everything we can to meet their goals as well.
Okay.
We just issued an RFP for the actual data center, which is the ground floor level, will be, just think of a giant computer room is really what it is, and companies and other organizations lease racks in there and services in there, in an environment that's made for that kind of equipment. It's cooled, it's backup generator, the building is protected from hurricane, storm surge, all those kind of things. So that's a second RFP that was just issued, we just had a Bitters Conference up at the building this morning, in fact, and those responses to that RFP had due on August 3 to us. So general renovation first, followed by, and in parallel with that process, the construction in the ground floor of the data center. Another topic I wanted to talk to you about was community outreach. I think all of you attended the Smarter Cape Summit, which was a great success last month, early this month. I would class it in, and I think that, and there were folks who spoke to us afterwards, whether it was the Secretary of Economic Development here in the Cape, in the state of Massachusetts. We also had some national representatives from the Department of Congress who are fully impressed with what we are doing in terms of smarter Cape Cod, because some folks who get a grant like we have sort of focus on just the fiber optics building the network. It was clear to them, just in the four hosts, Open Cave, Cape Cod Commission, the Chamber of Commerce, Cape Cod Technology Council, that all of us have a common view of where we need to go in this region, and we're working together to the broader effect than just building the infrastructure. And that went off very, very well with them. So the four hosts continue to meet on a regular basis to talk about how do we actually implement those ideas that came out of that summit to ensure that we actually get the full effect in economic development, better government services that will result in part from this infrastructure that we're building. We also have been outreaching to all of the towns. We've had, in some cases, three meetings in towns in the past, in some individual towns in the past couple of months. We've been to every town on the Cape now. In fact, I was in Chatham last night, and some of the folks in the audience were there, I recognize. So in most cases, it's been sort of a process of, we meet with the IT-type staff from the schools in the town, who then, say, the selectman and the town administrator and the superintendent should really hear this, we meet with them, and then normally I'll follow on with the economic development committees and things like that, because ultimately that is the goal. So we've had, in some cases, three meetings in towns with those types of groups to explain it and what we're doing, keep them up to date, get their input into what we're doing. So that kind of communication is going on as well, which I think is very, very important.
May I ask?
Yes.
Have you met with Howard?
Yes.
Okay. One of the questions that was raised by the member of the Board of Selectmen was the, the application of the middle school, which is now being, you know, being closed because of the regional, the regional schools, is that since the, since one of the main conduits for, you know, Open Cave is going down System Road, that opens up the possibility of tying in that middle school as an educational outreach, because it's across the street from the police station. Any discussions with them, has that been up?
In fact, that's brought up in each of the towns, and when I described that, so within our grant, we have money to connect 70 buildings on the Cape. And actually, one of the topics comes up in each town is, well, that's not really what we would want to connect, because we're connecting a lot of libraries, for example, and schools, but those are really shelters with the objective. So we say, well, the town's objectives aren't necessarily what the federal government's objectives were in giving the money out. And the federal government felt very strongly about shelters was a big one, so that's why a lot of the schools are actually the shelters here, obviously. So we use the county list of shelters. Libraries, we have 30 libraries on our list, and people sometimes say, well, you know, why are you connecting these libraries? Well, the federal government feels very strongly that those who are least able among us to buy a computer or afford internet access go there. And more and more, they're serving a crisis event type function, if you went to the tornadoes in Springfield, how do people go send an email to their family, say, we're okay, or communicate with their insurance company? Those kinds of things. So beyond that, though, there are the, so we call them laterals, 70 laterals that we're building into these buildings. That's what we're funded for. If a town wants to add more, they can. We try to bring it as close as we can, but there'll be a cost incurred by them for that, just to build the lateral. Go ahead.
Before you leave, the libraries, I think it's important that, the state of Massachusetts has indicated that the library should be the focal point for developing headquarters for crisis management activities, and that alone, to me, you know, justifies the, let's say, a robust connection into it. So I hope that that's, you know, when you're considering the library connection, it's not just to, you know, to provide internet access as much as it's a viable place for people who deal with the public on a regular basis to be able to respond to public need, you know, because when FEMA comes and goes, they, if they are located in town halls, the town halls are not equipped to continue support, as libraries are.
Yeah, that's a growing trend across the country, actually. And even in entrepreneurial activities, libraries are expanding their roles to have, like, space for people who are starting a business to work out of there and that sort of thing. So, well, an expanding role for libraries, so that's why they were in there. So if a town wants to expand the number of connections, it can. I'll give you a, for instance, at one town where they currently pay for a connection, a fairly steep fund fee for connecting a superintendent's of schools office with a high school, right? We go right by it, you know, we're 100 feet from the building. This is an opportunity for them to connect the two and do away with the fee for the connection, you see what I mean? There's a lot of that kind of discussion that goes on in each town, and we're trying to make sure that the path goes by them, and then we actually put a splice point outside the building if they tell us in advance, this is something we, maybe not even, not right now, but in the next three years, we think we want to connect. So we're doing a lot of that kind of thing. And in fact, related to that is, some, one of the towns at least has reached out to the county to say, can you help us with this, to develop a county-wide RFP for the construction of these? Again, a good role for the county to play in having one RFP process to which vendors can respond with a common set of standards, with different, obviously, sites within each town. Good role for the county, Elaine and the county procurement office and I have been talking about that, we're going to develop that, help her to develop that.
And we did that with fuel?
Yes.
For the town, so it would be a similar.
Yes, and that's really a good role and an appropriate function, I think, that folks would agree with. Another one on that is actually related to, as you know, we have a microwave backup system for the public safety people that uses water towers across the Cape. We met with the water district managers, and they recommended to us, I didn't even know this was possible, they said, we could work under a county RFP, and would prefer to. And so we're going to work with Mark, I've already met with Mark once about this, an RFP to cover all, because we, even though we're a public function and there's a lot of public safety involved, there's still a concern that, you know, this needs to go under Chapter 30B because it's still a license or a lease of town property. See, we don't want to have someone questioning this anywhere down the road, we're going to go through the RFP process. And, but it's easier to do that with one set of RFP standards, the county can help with that, another good role for the county to play. Another one related to that is, we're building, we call a municipal regional area network, right? So this is a fiber optic network that connects all of the towns. Each town gets a gigabit per second connection within its town for the public buildings. Now, in each town, we have anywhere from three to five connections that we're putting in, that will be points where they can connect to this regional network. And again, if you're going to have a regional GIS system, or a regional learning management system, or a regional phone system for all the public entities, right? You have to run that over something, and that's what we call this regional area network. So we're building that, we're providing it to people, right? As part of this process, and it will have, again, a gigabit per second for each town, a circuit within the town, and it has a gigabit per second connection to the internet. This is very fast. In fact, at our conference, at the Smarter Cape Conference, there was a national representative of an organization, municipals organization nationwide, said, this is the biggest gift that a community has gotten throughout the whole country in what you're building for them here, the way that they will be able to aggregate service needs, share common applications, that it will be a great, great advantage to this region. So as we think about building that, we say, okay, how does this get sustained, and how do decisions get made related to what runs on that network, right? Open Cave doesn't want to make those decisions, wants to participate in them, but doesn't want to make those decisions. So we have thought about creating a model of, we'll call it the Government Services Advisory Board or something, right? And have some representation from towns and some representation from school districts, and sort of like our board is of our company now, right? Where if a town says, we want to offer an application, and this has actually been suggested, one town came up and said, listen, we do online permitting very well, could we offer that on the network to other towns that don't have the capacity to offer it? We said, absolutely you can. So who goes, who makes the decision about allowing that town to offer the application, right? They would go to this advisory committee, who would say, okay, we hear your case, you can deliver the service on the network. Again, all within the public realm, but that's how, because Open Cave doesn't want to make those decisions. Now, there's a cost associated with this. As you know, in our original application to the government, though we're covering all the capital expenditure ourselves, there's an ongoing service cost related to this for the towns. But it will be far lower than what they pay now for all of the schools, libraries, police departments, libraries, to connect to the internet now. We had actually wanted to offer this free in our grant application, but the federal government told us we could not, we had to charge for the service, something. So we're going to come up with a basically cost-covering charge for all of these services and place it under what we hope will be, and I've talked to Mark about this too, I thought about the way that you now have the county assessment process, not using the currently formulated, but maybe an enterprise account? Because it's not just the network services that we have now, let's say you do have these applications in the future, let's say there was a common phone system. How does a town pay for that? Well, the same enterprise account can be used for that, do you see what I mean? Let's not reinvent the wheel and have a new structure for payment, and go to each town and work this out. Let's have a common system whereby we can grow over time as the smarter Cape applications develop to do that.
If the council government offers a service, offers a service, reality like that.
Now, I was going to say, that's really a little different. I think what you're saying is by creating an enterprise account, I think that's a really good idea, because the revenues that come into an enterprise account can only be used for whatever the service is. It can't be taken out and used for something else. So it actually, the revenues pay for it, and if the towns contribute, whatever that, whatever that is, based on whatever service they're, they're going to utilize, I think that's great to use it as an enterprise account, because it's sustainable.
And I think, I mean, honestly, so as you know, Open Cave is a nonprofit 501(c)(3), right? So we have a charitable purpose, and our charitable purpose and our, you know, corporate bylaws, and with the IRS, frankly, is to reduce the burden of government. So as our, we have licensed a private company to make money at this, right, selling it to business services and things, and they pay us a fee for that right to sell services. So let's say that they're successful, and we hope that they will be, and I think that they will be, they have to pay us a fee, which is a percent of their gross revenue. And what, what do we do as Open Cave with that gross revenue? Well, the first thing we have to pay are operating costs, we have to pay the pole owners all sorts of money, and, you know, it's, it's a lot of money. But I expect that within a few years, we'll be making revenues in excess of our operating costs, and what do we do with that excess? One, we have to have a reserve, because something could go wrong, we could get in a big storm, so you have to build a reserve. The other thing is, there may be additional things that we The other thing is, there may be additional things that we want to do to improve this for the community. There may be a need to extend the network, maybe we want to build some more fiber optics, say, in an area where we've said, geez, we really didn't cover that very well, so we can invest in that. These applications that we talk about, who's going to pay the capital upfront cost of that? Might be Open Cape on behalf of the communities, right? And even we could subsidize the cost that we do charge them. Maybe we decide, listen, Open Cape had a good year, we're going to defray the cost to the towns this year. Those things are all possible. Now, I can't commit to what our board will decide in pre-apply, but that's clearly the direction that we think at this point. And our corporate purpose requires us to do it.
I think also, just in thinking about what you've just said about an advisory board, if we called it a regional services advisory board, it would be, it would be open to almost anything. And it would, in other words, it wouldn't, it could accomplish more than even Open Cape. It could, it could help towns that believe that there's some regional services that would benefit them, whether through Open Cape or not. I mean, maybe it could be just more than that. I don't know, something to think of.
As long as, in that case, because the municipal regional network can only be used for public activity, not commercial activity.
Right, right.
It's isolated from it, so it has to stay in that realm.
So we'd have to say.
Right, but there's consensus that, say, assessing can be done, or, as you say, licensing for certain things, inspections. All of those things down the road may make sense to towns, like, you know, we're doing all this, and we could just do it out of one portal, and it all works, and...
Yeah, I mean, and if you think of things like, you know, the water initiative that's underway, I tend to think about things like the water problem that we have now as an opportunity, right? So can Cape Cod become a laboratory for the development of solutions related to water issues? Well, we have all the problems that anybody could think of, right? We have a really, an identifiable region in which to study it. Our network can help by, all those active sensors you might place all out there can provide that data. We know that the commission, the county commission, has an effort underway for the Smarter Water Initiative, that's growing and developing. So now you have an opportunity to say, oh, that Cape Cod becomes the place that develops in its laboratory the solutions to wastewater issues. Businesses develop, we know the marine biologic lab offered to participate in this, we have scientific research capabilities. Do we now create spinoff companies that are finding the solutions to wastewater and water usage and conservation in our own little laboratory now?
Okay, I think these are all wonderful, but any kind of power field of what Open Cape is, but I'd like to suggest to you that, one of the issues, when you brought up the point of private sector involvement, is that I hope that as you go forward, that connection, or that opportunity for connectivity remains open. Because while it's important to fulfill the requirement as put down by the feds about how this thing is supposed to serve at the summit and before that, the intention was that at some point, we would have the whole Cape connected in a way that would support economic development and job growth.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, this isn't an either or, this is we're doing both.
Right.
I mean, and the primary focus is economic development, but the public side gets a huge penalty out of this.
So this is, and the Strategic Information Office that we talk about through Smarter Cape Cod is all part of this. And that's really what this is.
Yeah, think about all comprehensive manner.
Yeah, in a very comprehensive way.
So one last thing, let me mention too, is that, you know, the chiefs of police and fire and EMS here in the Cape have come together with a subcommittee of the Barnstable County Regional Emergency Planning Committee, right? John O'Brien coordinates all of that. And so one of the goals of our project is to build what is a 700 megahertz mobile public safety system, right? So this is the digital data in the vehicles, the police, the fire, the ambulance, so that, you know, whether it's the policeman who wants to fingerprint the person they've pulled over and get an instant response as to warrants for that person, the fire truck that wants to see information about hazardous materials that are spilled on the road, the ambulance that's transporting you on July 20th from Provincetown to Hyannis to go to the hospital, to have a digital connection with the hospital doctors for video from the ambulance, all those things you sort of see on TV but aren't a reality in a lot of places, now become possible over this mobile network. Yes?
Would this then sort of take over or take the place of the CMed situation? So that, you know, we have this CMed, which is very much what we're just saying, which is the...
Dispatch.
The dispatch for medical emergencies. And it's lacking funds right now. It does come out of the sheriffs.
He just got his money today.
Oh, excellent.
Fifty thousand.
So, all right, so we, if we, okay.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, finish yourself.
Thank you. So we, so everybody's, you know, paying into this. There's hospitals, there's the sheriff, county has kicked in because we want to be able to ensure that there is that communication from the person who's being put in the ambulance to the hospital so they don't know what they're getting. So this has been costly, it costs $350,000 a year to run, the funds are lacking. Would this be able to just kind of morph that?
I would say that there's a relationship to some degree.
Yes.
There's a difference between what are the current voice communication systems and this.
Correct.
This is data. So if you think about it in terms of, there's 911 dispatch is an issue in and of its own self. Where are the PS apps for the, you know, the dispatching of people, right? There's a study underway right now by the same group.
Right, exactly.
So they're looking at that. At the same time, they're starting, they're looking at, you know, what is the underlying communications plan that supports that? And from my perspective, what is the underlying physical infrastructure that allows that communication plan to work? So we play a role in how that all might come out, but we don't get involved in the dispatch.
With the final decisions out, but you're looking at all of the different elements and saying, that can be, you know, we can probably incorporate that in here. You guys do make your decisions as you want.
Yeah, because honestly...
You can make the capability exist.
The physical infrastructure can support a lot of options.
Right.
And the decisions about those, what they will do is, just like I described to you for the services model, for having an advisory committee, this committee of the chiefs are making the decisions.
Right.
Open Cape is only there to make sure we're answering their needs in terms of the physical underlying infrastructure.
Right.
To support their needs. They're going to have to get an, for example, they're applying to the FCC to gain access to the frequency spectrum that we're using, and they're going to apply for grants to get additional money, because this, we can't cover the total cost of this. So they're going to go after granting money themselves. They are making the decisions. Open Cape is not.
Right, they're the policies.
Absolutely. But our infrastructure will clearly support what they want to do.
Right, okay, excellent.
That's what they need.
So, those are the things I wanted to bring to your attention and update you on. If you have any other questions, we're glad to take them.
I have a couple of questions. The EDC has set aside some money from their, from the license plate monies, to knowing that the towns are going to have to begin planning for this connection, this, what is it, the last mile connection? And so I guess they wondered, how, from your perspective, is that something you would assist with? Or if there are other monies available, or how would we get the towns to begin planning for this? Is that, that's probably not your role, though, is it?
It's not, though, we've participated, we go again, like, and Sandwich, the SEIC is a group they have there, there's EDC groups in different towns who are interested in, for example, how do you make it more, a better decision for a business to locate or stay in their industrial park, that kind of thing? So they are looking at, for example, instead of each company having to pay a private company to run fiber from the main road where we go into their business, can that economic development committee bring an aggregation point inside to a central location in the industrial park to make it cheaper for those companies? Some of them have even considered subsidizing it to the companies to go in there. Those kinds of things, their work, they're all thinking about all these different ideas. Now, where we can help them, you know, in order, you know, maybe we have the path going in a different direction that might help them, we're helping them with those kinds of technical issues.
So it's really incumbent upon all of the towns to begin to form their own groups to plan for this?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, a lot of the towns do have some organizational structure for this. Like I said, I was just at Sandwich this week, and I've been to a Falmouth Economic Development Committee as well. So there are towns that do have it, definitely, and they're thinking about these issues. How do we take this one step further? I mean, and even as a region, you know, again, the folks who hosted the Smart Cape Summit, you can't just have a summit and walk away and say, that's the end of that. Well, that was great, wasn't that really informative? Now what's the implementation plan? What's our strategy for making this actually a reality to increase the number of businesses, the number of high-paying jobs on Cape Cod? You have to, you know, put some money at that, you have to put some hours to that, you have to put some effort to that. And that's another direction, not just within the towns, but regionally. What is the strategy? Who's developing it? All those kinds of issues.
Have you ever attended any of the Cape managers' meeting, town managers' meeting?
I did, two years ago, I met with the Cape town administration group, yes.
Because I was thinking, this might be a good time for you to meet with them again.
Right.
And maybe help them understand that they need to get going on their last mile planning.
And just the possibilities of how this can help, you know, everyone work together and to actually do their own mandated work more efficiently.
And how it can help them with their, with any need they may have for regional services, or any ideas that they might want to tie into.
I'd also suggest to you that, since you're in the Cape Cod Commission building, that the Cape Cod Commission has some interest in this as far as their economic development activity.
That's right.
And it might be useful to find out if any of the members of the Cape Cod Commission would be willing to communicate to the planning agencies within their town, because it seems to me that the, in representing the interest of a community as the appointed representative to the regional planning agency, that it might be useful for them to communicate this interest that we have of engaging the towns that they come from, you know, in this process.
Yeah, I'll tell you, some of that does go on, like JD Harris, who was on the committee, you know, has frequent conversations with me, and links me with Sandwich people on a regular basis, for example.
John is an example for the rest of the room.
Yeah, right. You know, this, if I may just sidestep a little, but this takes me to the editorial that was in the Cape Cod Times this weekend, which talked about, we as a region are facing very big issues. And I think they're issues that we have stated, I usually say energy, economic development, environment, they put energy, economic development, and solid wastes, you know, wastewater, solid wastes, and economic development. And, you know, there was a lot of discussion there with people from Clean Water, who I know that they must be aware of what we're discussing, but, you know, ours is not a one mode approach to wastewater as we're thinking through this as proposals for the future, but looking at, you know, natural attenuation, alternative septic systems, and sewerage, and that hopefully will be the least amount of what will occur to fix this problem, but the most costly nonetheless. And so I think that, in reading that article, it kept saying, there has to be an entity that can drive these issues and handle them. And to me, my mind is that the entity has to be the county. And, I mean, not has to be, but it could be considered to be the county. And in looking at where we're having this special commission that's actually looking at the structure of the county, I mean, as we're poised right now, would we be able to just step right up? I think these are the questions that we need to look at through this, or hopefully will be addressed through the special commission that is looking at the structure of the county, because it is a unique regional body that could, if it was, if we look at it correctly, and with the possibilities of the future, and with the possibilities of Open Cape, and the, you know, the assistance that it provides, and the opportunities, these are things that we, that hopefully will be directing us in the future, and I think that we should take the lead on.
Well, we are.
I know that we have it many ways, but it's all in these little separate...
The county planning agency is the Cape Cod Commission.
Commission.
Okay. If the Cape Cod Times, which suddenly discovered the importance of wastewater and using Cleveland, that had a river called the Cayuga River that was on fire, and they had, they only had to do something, had to put out the fire in order to do it, and then had to clean up Lake Erie, which was so polluted that no fish were living in it, and they're using that as an example, I thought that was really marvelous. When if the Cape Cod Times, and I'd say that directly to them, would spend some time and attention to what is actually going on here, rather than having somebody fly in from Ohio and say, you ought to be doing this, I think we'd be a lot better off.
I absolutely agree, because these are, no, but these are meetings, these are discussions that do take place. I mean, you know, I know that Dan is in the Cape Cod Commission building, you are aware of what is going on there, and they're planning and looking at these issues, and as we all are, and also with the Economic Development Council, with the cooperative in looking at the agriculture needs, these are, and our health departments, these are issues that are being addressed here. And if people took the time to actually get inside and attend and listen and ask questions, you'll see how far advanced we are as opposed to making comments almost after the fact.
So we're in agreement.
We're in agreement.
The other part is, we've had Patty Daley in here talking about solid waste management, and indeed, as recently as a week ago.
Yes.
Prior to this editorial where they discovered solid waste management as a problem, we'd already, we'd already developed or heard from her as far as things that we need to do in order to address the problem. So, within the county, we have the county planning agency, Cape Cod Commission, which is indeed addressing these issues, and it would seem to be that since we already have an organization that does that, that perhaps what we need to do is to make sure that they do indeed address this, rather than inventing another agency to...
You're right, and I'm not saying to invent another agency, but I'm just saying, how can you, how can that be the, how can we be the entity that oversees and overlooks that, and how can we make sure that all of those things are taken? So these are just sidelines on the editorial, editorials on the editorial, but since you're here.
Great stuff.
It's all great stuff.
That's great, thanks, Dan.
Okay, thank you for having me. And let me, never want to leave without saying, again, thank you for your support.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for letting us use some office space. All the federal people do come here, the inspector generals, and say, so you're running this $40 million project out of an eight-by-eight room? I said, that's right, we're not wasting anybody's money here.
And we never forget the fact that we were the first up with the money.
That's right.
But also, it took, it took a real skill in getting this forward, so we thank you and your volunteers. Somebody does have some questions, if you're willing to entertain them.
Through the chair, thank you. I just wanted to ask a really quick question. One of our major employment activities on the Cape was brought up with the magic word of healthcare, and this could be a way not only of getting the information from the ambulance, but also getting the information of, say, any centralized facility out to the outlying healthcare centers. And so, are they also having input to this?
Yeah, so let me say this, under federal law, all medical records have to be electronic. I forget the date of that, but it's upcoming, it's not far away. And all of these hospital and healthcare providing companies, whether it be Cape Cod Healthcare, or Partners Healthcare, who runs the rehab hospital, or any of them.
Or the Outer Cape, you know, the Cape.
Outer Cape, they all have to comply with this. And they are all, you know, thinking about our network as the vehicle by which they integrate, because, again, a patient at Cape Cod Healthcare could be sent to the rehab hospital run by Partners, right? Or someone from Plymouth, for that matter, could be sent over there, or South Shore Hospital. So there are, we have, one of our board members is actually the CIO of Spalding Treatment Centers for Partners, and he's been pulling together the other hospital entities so that they have an advisory committee, such as I mentioned for the government entities here, to work out these issues to say, how can we do this together more effectively? So that definitely is part of the conversation.
And if I may, that was one of the highlights when you were, when we were announcing the big grant and all of that, it happened at the rehab hospital, and that was mentioned as one of the integral interests.
And the nursing homes, too.
Exactly. Right, I was thinking of nursing homes.
Thank you. Do you have an outline of your partners?
It doesn't look very good, Bill, but I can send you something.
They haven't from the tape, and, yeah, we'll just do bullets.
I'll send you some.
Okay. Great.
Yes?
I guess I just have a question, let me see, regarding the...
Would you identify yourself?
I'm Helen Bresnahan from the town of Barnstable. Yes, I just have a question regarding competition. Have you discovered that there's some competition out there with this particular company? I don't know what I'm asking you.
Yes, so our, because we're federally funded, and actually, in order to get the grant, you had to commit to an open, vendor-neutral network environment. So even though we've licensed the company, CapeNet, to sell services on our network, they actually have to even sell to their competitors. So our fiber could be used by Comcast to improve their services, or Verizon, or any other company who wants to use our resources. They pay a fee for that, but it's, again, open to all of those companies if they want to use our resources. And CapeNet, the licensed company right now, they manage that process on our behalf, but they cannot have a proprietary stake and prevent competitors from entering the marketplace. Because, again, we represent the interests of the community. The interest of the community is a competitive marketplace. And I will say to you that, right now, we're already having this effect in that you'll see that Comcast, for example, is offering services on Cape Cod now that they never offered before, called Metro Ethernet, just announced, and they're starting to advertise this itself. It's more to businesses, but this is a new thing now, here on Cape Cod. And that's in part, I think, as a result of what we're doing. We're spurring competition and better services in the competitive marketplace as a result of what we're doing. And that's exactly what we want to see happen. Because competition, I just moved to the Cape, actually, from Mansfield, where we have FiOS and Comcast and any number of services, right? When you get a call every week from a different company offering to switch to us, and we'll give you, you know, the triple play for $77, that doesn't happen down here.
Right.
But that will change over time as more retail companies come into the marketplace using our highway, so to speak, to offer those kinds of services. So that's one of our objectives, is a competitive marketplace.
Thank you, Dan.
And welcome as a permanent resident.
Yeah.
Yes, Steve.
This is extraordinarily interesting and exciting. I wonder if the commissioners might consider inviting Mr. Gallagher to appear on a regular basis, perhaps quarterly, just to share his progress with you and through you, the community?
Sure. Pretty much worked out that way.
Yeah, we'll keep it up.
We'll see him come back.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you for your hard work.
All right, the next item would be to approve the, these are summary of actions.
I'm making a motion to approve.[1690.83]
A second.
On discussion?
I have one question.
Excuse me.
You asked for...
Oh, I'm sorry.
You asked for his comment. I've always wished that the commissioners have minutes of these kinds of proceedings because unless you're here and listening very closely, very important stuff he said would be nice, like the assembly had a bit better of what goes on.
Right.
Anyway. We do have minutes, but we should, we should definitely approve our minutes.
And we're working on that. The requirement of the open meeting was very specific in that our minutes are supposed to reflect a summary of what, you know, of what's happened, and that's why I'd asked Dan to give us an outline of what...
I'm glad you're working on that because I noticed that also.
And, you know, it is, I mean, I know that you have trouble hearing sometimes, as do many people, whether it's noise or what have you, but it is nice to have that written document just to make sure that you're, what you think you're hearing is...
And you can't be sure of all of everyone's hearing.
I agree.
Okay, well, you have a motion and a second on the floor for the need to action?
Yes.
Is there any discussion hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any objections, a visible? Okay, do you have any, while we're signing, does anybody have any reports to make?
I have a report that I wanted to pass out to you. Actually, this is, this came to my attention only because it's, it's a letter from the Attorney General's office, and it deals with an open meeting law complaint that occurred in the town of Melrose. But it's very, it has a very good relationship to what we've been talking about because the violations were adding an agenda item without proper notice. That was one of the complaints. And the other one was happened to do, happened to deal with where the committee discussed a topic in executive session that didn't qualify for any of the exemptions for executive session. So I thought it would make good reading material.
Yes.
Just to read how the Attorney General's...
Just make sure, so that we can keep our name from being on such a letter.
Handle these complaints so we know what they recommend. They didn't take any action or make, file any penalties.
It was just a recommendation.
For the record, there are 10 reasons why we go into executive session, which to the best of my knowledge and belief, we have used one of those in every instance that we have gone into executive session.
We have never done that, but it always helps to know what the Attorney General's expectations are.
Right, and what their advices.
When complaints are filed.
Yes, I think that would be very...
Thank you, Dan.
You're very welcome. Keep us all out of jail, that's what I wanted to do.
That's right. And trustworthy.
Well, actually, the same thing is there, like a monopoly to take the $200 bucks and go to jail.
That's true.
Okay, do you have anything?
Only that probably similar things that we will both talk about is the redistricting hearing that was Monday evening that we attended and both, I didn't do a formal testimony, but it turned out I should have walked down there and talked and spoke, since I spoke from my chair, but in regards to retaining our 10th district congressional seat, and others were there, and there's going to be some movement of representative seats. So to people whose towns those were going to be affecting, there were lots of people, particularly from Brewster, who love their representative, not that they don't love anybody else, but they do love their, and very effective, and that they had very good arguments to make, whether that will be taken into consideration. It was impressive group, beautiful day on Cape Cod, wasn't hard to come down, but it was nice that we could all be here, senators and representatives. And, who else were we at, Bill? Were you at something else? Oh, I had my workforce development, which was there in a meeting that I attended. And I think it was, was there something, you know, I do so many things I don't write down, I don't have my diary, I know Bill keeps a little diary, I should have a diary, but many conversations...
Organization is the key to effective performance.
Yes, well, I actually affect, I actually perform effectively, I just don't write it down so I can report it and get all my kudos for it. But I guess that was, that was basically, I know that I missed a few social things such as Congressman, or former Congressman Delahoe's office opening, and I had big reports that those were all great social gatherings, but I had company and I needed to enjoy them.
Well, they did serve liquors, though.
Yeah, they did.
They did, no.
Oh, they did, well...
They did.
Wine, not liquor, but wine.
That wouldn't have been why I was sitting there.
You never told me where it was.
It was mid...
I just knew it was there, I never, I...
I didn't want you to misbehave.
Really, it was all in the parking lot, but very few people I think made it inside.
Yeah. You've covered it all?
Okay.
Did you have anything else?
No.
Okay, now, with that, we don't have the administrator, a written report from the administrator, I think I've already mentioned he was ill, and the assistant company administrator is involved with preparation for a hearing with the Department of Public Utilities, so she's not able to be here.
I think in the future that we should maybe take a look at if we are to cancel, what are the things, I mean, if we're going to have a policy that they're there, what's our timeline of canceling that meeting as soon as we...
Well, and notification.
That's what I mean, notification to the public that it would be moved.
Yeah, if we had to do that.
Fortunately, because of somebody being ill and the circumstances of things, it's kind of difficult to, you know, let's say to predict that, but I did offer you the opportunity to postpone.
I know you did, and I guess that's maybe how we'd have to handle it, is convene the meeting and postpone it to another day officially.
And really depending upon what's on the agenda, and that way, and if Maggie and Mark know that that's what our plan will be. Today, it was more of a report, so it wasn't quite as essential.
Right.
But if there are other items on there, that they will know that that's what we are going to do if that happens.
Thank you.
Okay, well, with that...
Oh, no, I do want to say one thing. I do want to talk about the...
We are a new business.
Well, this is a new business. I just want to talk about the young man who was killed in northern Iraq from Fale.
Oh, from Fale.
Yes.
So sad.
I know. His 25th, 23rd birthday is this Tuesday, coming Tuesday, July 5th, and that's when the military will be flying his body back to Hanscom Air Force Base. And I think the community has really come together because it's, it's the first time that a young man or woman was killed in the line of duty. And like tonight, there's a candlelight vigil at the beach, which is near his home where he lived. And he and his wife were married, I think it was like three years ago, they must have been 19 or 20 when they married. And I was speaking to her mother this morning because the town held a flag lowering ceremony even though we haven't received work from the governor. Usually, the governor doesn't authorize it until the day of the funeral, but we have an option, you know, as town executives to do that. So we did it this morning and had a ceremony, and his, some of his family came, his parents were actually in Dover, you know, because his body was flown in last night, yeah. But the community's really come together on this, just like they did with Steve Exarath's son, Nick.